This is a reminder that this is also a remote meeting and teleconference using Zoom pursuant to one MRSA. It's on. Buzz. One MRSA, section 403-a, welcome to the Sanford Public, Sanford Planning Board Meeting of June 25th, 2024. Meeting will now come to order. This is a public proceeding unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session. You have the right to hear everything that's being said and look at all the exhibits that are offered. Please notify the chair if you aren't able to hear or see something. Please know that if any planning board members have potential conflicts of interest, of which they are aware, they will disclose the conflict prior to the board initiating a hearing or action on an application. All persons speaking will be asked to state your name and address and then proceed. At the sole discretion of the chair, the public testimony may be limited to five minutes per speaker. For each item, the applicant will be asked to describe the project. Thereafter, the chair will ask proponents of the project to speak, followed by opponents, and then those who are neither for nor against, but who may want to ask a question or make a general comment. Everyone who wants will have an opportunity to speak to the board through the chair. Any questions must go to and through the chair, who will then decide at what point to either ask staff or the applicant to respond. The chair may wait until after testimony has concluded to seek answers to any questions that are raised by public or board members. Please note that rudeness, uncivil behavior, clapping, cheering, booing, et cetera, will not be tolerated. And if these behaviors occur, the chair at a sole discretion may terminate the hearing and reschedule it for another date. In addition, the chair at a sole discretion will limit repetitious comments, although it is entirely appropriate for an individual to indicate that he or she agrees with the previous speaker. Prior to closing the public hearing, the chair will ask if there are any new comments, and the applicant will be allowed to make a single rebuttal in response to the testimony which was provided. Once the public hearing portion of the meeting is closed, the chair will accept no additional public comment. However, a member of the board at the chair's discretion may ask the applicant or member of the public to respond to a question. This will not reopen public comment. Planning board decisions are based solely on whether the applicant has provided sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of local, state, and federal laws. In this regard, public testimony is most effective when it considers the impacts of the project in light of Sanford subdivision, site plan, shoreline, or zoning ordinances, and other relevant regulations. After the board discusses the merits speech project, it will vote on written findings of fact, since the findings may substantially affect any appeals rights. And also, as a matter of courtesy, the board asks that those attending the meeting do not leave until the board has adopted the findings for your project. After the planning board makes its final decision, any reconsideration by the board must be made in the next regularly scheduled meeting. If anyone wishes to appeal the board's final decision, he or she must do so within 30 days. The city's ordinance, ordinances, and comprehensive plan are available for viewing at the city's website and in the Planning and Development Department's office at 919 Main Street. Remember, this is a public proceeding. You have the right to hear and see what is happening, and we welcome public participation. Okay, so we'll move right into business. We're going to pick up old business for public hearing, file number L-2533, Hanson Ridge Road, Townhouse Solar. Jamie, can you orient us on what's happened since the last meeting?
Since the last meeting, the applicant has continued to work with Assistant City Engineer Matt Preventure. We now have an updated plan that has all of his engineering comments addressed on it. Matt told Aaron this afternoon that at this point, he is, actually, I think it was yesterday, but he is comfortable with the plans as presented. They also added a note to the landscaping plan that says 15 additional evergreen trees will be planted at the discretion of code enforcement and the abutters and the landscaping architect. So I believe all of the items have been added to the plan that was discussed at the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Barrett, I see that you're online. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, thank you very much for having us again tonight. Yeah, we don't really have anything to add, as Jamie summarized. That's the information that we submitted. We did meet with Matt Preventure and coordinated with Jamie, so I think we're all set.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from staff?
Yeah, I don't believe so. I think Matt Preventure and I are both satisfied with what they have provided as far as landscaping and stormwater engineering culvert details.
Yeah, so I guess one, one last question I have is, we had the public hearing twice on this. We only had a few issues that we took care of. Do we need to have another public hearing on this? Or, yeah, open public comment?
Well, we did close the public hearing.
You closed it last time, so I think, I think we're good.
All right, all right, so I'll open it up for planning board discussion.
Did Sabaio Technics meet with the abutters?
I don't believe they've met with the abutters yet. That's going to be at, at the time of planting. That is when the landscape architect and the abutters and code enforcement are going to come together to decide where those trees get planted.
Do we know when they're going to start planting?
That would be towards the end of the project, I'm assuming, so early fall would be my...
Can we force that to have them start planting before, now?
Typically, you don't want them to plant during construction because we want the stuff to live. So you could probably request that they do the plantings after that section of the site is, is worked. But you probably don't want them to plant today because then they'll get destroyed.
They're not doing any construction where the plantings are going.
Just a little bit, not much, but correct.
Okay.
But yes, I, I think it would be at your discretion to, to request when they get planted.
I just had one question on the, the lower part, the Angola side. That's more tenuous than the upper part as far as water and deterioration and the public. And so I just wanted to be clear on one thing. The, the long-term maintenance, that, because that's more of a groomed area now, even though it has retention ponds and swales and so on and so forth. But having that in place, the sandwich, stone sandwich, all those things that we looked at, is there, is it in the plans, because I couldn't tell, down in that area, that would be also a regular maintenance responsibility of the, of the developer?
As part of their DEP stormwater permit, that is, that is part of that forever maintenance agreement that is made.
Forever maintenance, forever, all right, thank you. The only other question, if the 15 trees, because I'm not sure if you'll fit 15 trees in that area, but it's the discretion of Matt or the team to put them...
I believe it was where did code enforcement, abutters, and landscape architect.
Okay, thank you.
The plan is to go out and place stakes where they believe the trees to be, and then show where the stakes are for approval, and then plant the trees.
And then plant the trees, and then the extra trees will find their way as needed.
No, no, that's for the...
That is for the 15.
That's for the extra, that's for the 15?
Yeah.
Got it, all right.
Those were the 15 that we couldn't...
Right.
Smartly plant today because of, there are mature trees already in that area.
Mm-hmm.
All right, anything else, and then we'll want to come back to the planning schedule and make sure we have a plan on that. Anything else? Good, you're good, Jase. Okay. So how would we take care of this, Jack's recommendation?
So we already in ordinance have a requirement that they plant by a date specific, or they have to do an additional performance guarantee on the landscaping. So we could address it via that section, the ordinances already prevails, or we could put a condition that the revegetation plan is completed by a, a date specific.
Is that October 15th?
I think it's September 15th.
Okay.
Is it September 15th, once, right now, it's once construction is complete? So assuming they did it all this summer, then it would still be September 15th?
The, the project personnel told us that this project has to happen this year. So I, I, I think they are going to actively try to, try to get this done as quickly as possible. They have tried to expedite their review team to get documents to us rapidly because I'm pretty sure they said it has to be live by December 31. So I, I think they are going to be actively trying to get this done in a timely fashion.
So, Jack, does mid-September satisfy your concern?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They can do it.
Jase, did you have something else?
No, my big thing is like, so if they're not complete by September, or whatever the date, they could go the whole winter without planting. I mean, because obviously not planting in the winter.
Again, I, I can't speak for them, but I'm pretty positive they're going to make this happen as soon as possible. They, they, they have said publicly during this meeting, they have to make it happen.
All right.
So. And again, we have a performance guarantee in place specifically for vegetation if they don't meet that deadline. So while I can't say if they miss it, it will happen immediately, we, we do require an additional performance guarantee specific for vegetation, for landscaping, so. If they don't meet that deadline, they're going to have to put money in escrow to, to do it. So while I can't guarantee it will happen by September 15th, I can guarantee you it happens.
Right. Like, because during construction, you're going to have a stormwater prevention program, and if they're going to be still working up there, you're not going to be growing grass. And there's a lot of things that may or may not happen this fall, but the perimeter might happen with the trees and stuff. And then they'll, they'll have to fill in in the spring, but that's still part of the guarantee that you're talking about. So we're covered.
Correct. And Jack is correct. The area where the trees are, there's not a lot of proposed activities, so. While you don't necessarily want to plant trees in August...
No.
Because of the, the water requirements, I, I think they could, as soon as the super hot sun starts to recede, which is the end of August, beginning of September, I think they could probably make that happen.
All right, any other thoughts or concerns on the board? All right, I think we're ready for findings of fact.
280-16-7A, utilization of the site. This has been met because the proposed site plan reasonably uses the site.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six, zero.
280-16-7N, solid waste disposal. This condition is met because the solid waste is proposed to be collected on-site and removed by a private contractor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six, zero.
280-16-7Q, technical and financial capacity. This condition is met because the standard has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capacity.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six, zero.
280-16-7F, stormwater management. The standard is met because the condition that the applicant install and maintain the stormwater treatment systems as the finalized stormwater plan depicts.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six, zero.
Group one, 280-16-7B, access to the site. 280-16-7C, access into the site. 280-16-7D, internal vehicular circulation. 280-16-7E, pedestrian circulation. These standards are met because the development will not create hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six, zero.
Group two, 280-16-7G, erosion control. 280-16-7J, utilities. 280-16-7K, natural features. 280-16-7L, groundwater protection. 280-16-7M, exterior lighting. 280-16-7O, landscaping. And 280-16-7R, buffering. These standards are met because the applicant has provided adequate provisions to meet the standards.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six, zero.
Group three, 280-16-7H, water supply. 280-16-7I, sewage disposal. And 280-16-7P, shoreline relationship. These standards are not applicable. The, the applicant is not proposing any development. This standard is not applicable.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six, zero.
And I just saw I did a typo on that, so I'm going to ask for one correction.
Okay.
280-16-7R buffering, we originally done met. It's actually met with the condition that the applicant install and maintain the buffers as shown on their plan approved by the planning board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six, zero. Thank you. All right, so we have a proposed motion, suggested motion?
The planning board accepts the information in the May 14, 2024 summer report, grant the requested waivers, and finds the proposed amendment to major site plan and conditional use approval number L-2533 to construct a 1.99 megawatt utility solar project has satisfied the requirements of Article 8 and Article 16 of the zoning ordinance, subject to the submission, scratch that, which are part of the following conditions of approval. Planning board standard conditions of approval, number three, AutoCAD, number five, outside agency permits, number six, inspection fiesco, number seven, pre-construction meeting, number eight, landscaping performance guarantee, and number nine, plan changes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six, zero. Good luck. All right, so moving on to new business, file number R-811-Brovo, 402 Lebanon Street, Leveque excavation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Jamie, can you orient us on...
So this project is a conditional use application for Leveque excavation. They are an existing excavation contractor that has been on this location for, for many years. They are looking to do an expansion for a storage building. This is the first project since our ordinance has been revised to allow contractors as a standalone use in the rural zone instead of a accessory use in the rural zone. This went through site plan with a few minor comments coming from... I think that's all.
Okay. Do we have the applicant here?
David Leveque, Leveque's excavation. We're proposing a 9,840 square foot building. I think there, it's a minor site plan amendment. As part of that, we, we hired Sabaio Technics to do a hydrocat analysis for the property as well as a drainage plan, which you have in your packet. So a drainage design has been done. An existing site conditions was done from Stephen Horn, Land Surveyor of Sanford, Maine. Basically, what we're proposing is all in the plans. Happy to answer, any questions?
Okay, so I'll have the public hearing and we'll come back if there, if there are questions by the board.
Okay.
We'll, we'll call you back up. Yes.
We advertise.
Okay. So before I open the public hearing, does staff, any, have any additional comments?
Sure. So as Jamie mentioned, this new subsection to the standards for conditional approval was approved at city council on June 18th. So this is a permitted as a conditional use now in the RR zone. The setbacks are currently shown with both the required 30-foot, and then a 35-foot building setback should accommodate the building. The applicant did mention in the site plan review committee meeting that they might be addressing the height of the building. And as long as it doesn't go above 35 feet with the new building elevation, then this setback is sufficient. So that's maybe something for a discussion. And then the buffering that is required per the conditional use standards is meant to be all the way around the property, but specifically the vegetated buffer is for the residential abutters. And so we just ask that the label be updated from 30-foot setback to 30-foot vegetated buffer where it abuts the residential property. The other comments that came out of the site plan review committee was for emergency access. So we've, they've added a Knox box to the site. They added some other material storage locations that were requested and a dumpster on-site. And that is all.
Okay, thank you. I'll now declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone else in the audience or on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this project? Anybody in, either in the room or on Zoom who would like to speak in opposition to this project? Anyone who would like to ask a question or make a general comment? Any last, last chance? All right, declare the public hearing closed, and planning board can now discuss this project.
Nothing.
No concerns. It's pretty small. I mean, the square footage might look big when you look at it, but when you're talking about excavation equipment, it's relatively minor.
And just to orientate you guys, this lot is right next to Hartford's, well, what used to be Hartford's Equipment Repair. So it, it's, it's kind of a commercialized little node of development in, in the RR zone.
Right, I guess if we don't, we don't have any concerns, then like, we're ready for findings of fact?
I have no concerns.
Okay, great, findings of fact. 280-16-7A, utilization of the site. The standard is met because the proposed site plan reasonably uses the site.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six, zero.
280-16-7N, solid waste disposal. The standard is met because the solid waste is proposed to be collected on-site and removed by a private contractor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six, zero.
280-16-7Q, technical and financial capacity. The standard is met because the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capacity.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six, zero.
280-16-7P, shoreline relationship. The standard is met, oh, sorry, the standard is not applicable. The applicant is not proposing any development. The standard is not applicable.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six, zero.
Group one, 280-16-7B, access to the site. 280-16-7C, access into the site. 280-16-7D, internal vehicular circulation. And 280-16-7E, pedestrian circulation. These standards are met because the development will not create hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six, zero.
Group two, 280-16-7F, stormwater management. 280-16-7G, erosion control. 280-16-7H, water supply. 280-16-7I, sewage disposal. 280-16-7J, utilities. 280-16-7K, natural features. 280-16-7L, groundwater protection. 280-16-7M, exterior lighting. 280-16-7O, landscaping. And 280-16-7R, buffering. These standards are met because the applicant has provided adequate provisions to meet the standards.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six, zero.
That is all of them.
That is all of them?
Yes.
All right, so do we have a suggested motion?
The planning board accept the information in the June 4, 2024 summer report, grant the requested waivers, and find the minor site plan and conditional use application R-811B to construct a new 9,840 square foot building with associated site improvements has satisfied the requirements of Article 16 of the zoning ordinance, subject to the following condition. By July 25th, 2024, unless other arrangements are made with the planning department, provide three copies of revised plans that adequately respond to issues raised in the review, which are part of the following condition of approval. One, update the site plan to relabel the 30-foot setback as a 30-foot vegetated buffer. And then two, standard conditions of approval, number two, performance guarantee. Number five, outside agency approval. Number six, inspection fiesco. Number seven, pre-construction meeting. Number eight, landscaping performance guarantee. And number nine, alteration of plans.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six, zero. Good luck.
Good luck, thank you.
All right, so moving on to new business, file number K-30-39, 10 to 14 School Street, Central Park Residences. Jamie, can you orient us on this?
Yeah, this project came before you back in 2021. It's on the parcels of land on the other side of Central Park, on the corner of Bodwell and School Street. It got approval for site plan subdivision at that point. The owners are present. They applied for and was received some main housing funding for this project. With that comes a few minor requests for change from main housing. So tonight there before you asking for an amendment to that original subdivision plan. There's an elimination of a proposed lot line. There's a little bit of moving around of, like a transformer pad. But the, the bigger one is originally they were all one-bedroom units. They are now requesting to change four of the one-bedroom units to two-bedroom units. And with that, they had originally asked for and was granted a parking waiver for some parking. The change of these four one-bedrooms to two-bedrooms increases the parking requirement by one spot. So they're looking to add one additional spot to their parking waiver request.
All right. Do you, as the applicant, ready to?
My name is Tim Rankin. I'm here from Rhine Corp. I appreciate you guys adding this meeting and taking the time to speak with me, walk you through some of the changes. You guys see my screen?
It'll pop up in a second.
Okay. So back in 2021, we were proposed as three projects on three separate lots. Since then, with interest rates and construction increases, we weren't able to bank that project. We looked for alternative financing sources. We ended up coming up with the Rural Affordable Rental Housing Program, which will allow us to build 18 units of workforce housing on a portion of the lot that is shown for building B and building C. Originally, there was a proposed lot line right here, and what we're proposing to do is eliminate that and make this one lot. So the one project will be on this side, and then the 12 unit will be over here. Building A and building B are proposed to have a, two, two-bedroom units, replace one-bedroom units. And we're hoping to update our parking waiver specifically to show that the requirements basically are met by the parking that are on each individual lot. I'll be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
All right, thank you. Do we advertise this as a public hearing?
Yes.
We did. I know.
All right, so before I open the public hearing, any staff comments, additional staff comments?
Aaron had done a staff report this afternoon that had brought up a few additional discussion points. I spoke with Tim on the phone about an hour ago now. I, I think we worked through the discussion points. Few of them were for housekeeping things. I, I think we're, I think we're okay as, as presented.
Okay. All right, I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody in the room or on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this project? Or anybody who would like to speak in opposition to this project? Finally, is there anybody who would like to speak neither for or against, but would like to make a comment or ask a question? like to make a comment or ask a question? Okay, declare the public hearing closed and pick it up for planning board consideration.
I just want clarity when you say it's two projects, so you're going to build C and B first, and then A will come at a different time? Is that how that works?
Could you just?
Yeah, thanks. And explain that and explain what the condition of the entire site will be when A is just a barren spot.
Yes, one second. Let me see if I.
When he's finding it, just when this project originally came through in twenty-one, it was it was approved as a phased project at that point, one building at a time. Now we're just doing two at once instead of one, one and one.
So we have included as part of our submission a phasing plan. You can see that Building C and Building B would be constructed in phase one. As part of that, we would have a paved two-way access across the right-hand side of the site to access Bodwell Street. The portion of the site shown as phase two would not be really disturbed at that point. And then once phase one was complete and funding was achieved, then phase two could be started, and that would be this last building here. The storm water treatment and all that is part of phase one, so that's all installed
So that portion of the site is currently, I'm going to call it field grass, but currently vegetated. It would remain in that state.
All the transformers in and the walkways for the pedestrians on the outside?
The walkways that are on Bodwell Street are existing, and the walkways that are on School Street are existing. Those are part of phase three, which would actually be done very end. That's how it was originally proposed, and that's because of the work that the city's planning to do on School Street, and we're trying to coordinate our work so that they don't dig up our brand-new sidewalk. But within the site, all the sidewalks and paving and dumpster would be complete for the portion of the site that's owned by the first phase.
So assuming there's construction fencing around the the entire site during phase one, and you'll take it down, but you'll have a field and you'll have driveway and the walkways will be in place. And then when you build the second building?
Then there'll be a building fence around the
Just the building.
Second building.
Correct. All right, thank you.
So phase two parking, how are you going to dole out those four parking spots that are doubled?
The ordinance allows for stacked parking. They have to be within the same unit. And then we'll likely charge an extra fee for somebody who wants two parking spaces.
Okay.
Do those parking spaces have to be designated for?
The ordinance doesn't require that. The ordinance says that stack parking has to be for a particular unit, but it doesn't say they have to be flagged as like unit fourteen B type of thing.
I would note that that's not part of our request today. That's part of our original approval from twenty twenty-one.
Any other comments, concerns from the board?
Nope.
Right, I guess the only one question I have is this the the setback note, are we still concerned about about that with the change in the setback?
I don't believe we are concerned with that because just recently in March of this year, we changed the setback in the urban zone to be a maximum of twenty feet. And that language is shown on the site plan just because it was a holdover from previous submission, I think, but the building itself is within twenty feet. So it meets the current standards, and I think that's the key.
Great. Thank you.
The buildings are in compliance with the new ordinance.
Yeah, that's how I read it is the note on the note didn't indicate that, but we know it, yeah. Okay, so we're good.
So that was one of the discussion points. I'll bring them up where we brought it up. The other one was the plan shows the original map and lot numbers and the original owners of the map and lot numbers. So if we were gonna get a if if we came out of tonight's meeting and there needed to be revisions, we we were going to request to have those original map and lot numbers and owner's names removed just to try to eliminate confusion. They were on the original approval. It it is clearly marked as the original map and lot numbers, so we don't feel it has to come off. It's just if we were going to get a if they had to make amendments to it, we were going to have them update the urban zone block. Again, it it doesn't, it's really just a technicality. It doesn't affect the project, but if 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 they were doing amendments, we were going to ask them. If they were doing amendments, we were going to ask them type of thing.
All right. No, I'm I'm satisfied with that. It doesn't make sense just to do it to do it, so. All right, any other, nothing else from the board? All right, we have findings of fact?
We do. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven A utilization of the site. This can standard is met because the proposed site plan reasonably uses the site.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six zero.
Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven N solid waste disposal. The standard is met because the solid waste is proposed to be collected on site and removed by a private contractor.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six zero.
Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven Q technical and financial capacity. The standard is met because the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capacity.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six zero.
Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven P shoreline relationship. The standard is not applicable. The applicant is not proposing any development. The standard is not applicable.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six zero.
Group one, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven B access to the site, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven C access into the site, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven D internal vehicular circulation, and two eighty dash sixteen dash seven E pedestrian circulation. These standards are met because the development will not create hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six zero.
Group two, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven F storm water management, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven G erosion control. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven H water supply, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven I sewage disposal, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven J utilities, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven K natural features, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven L groundwater protection, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven M exterior lighting, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven O landscaping, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven R buffering. These standards are met because the applicant has provided adequate provisions to meet the standards.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six zero.
I'll just read it from the.
And this is going to get a little bit confusing. I I identified the fact for just a site plan, not a subdivision. So we're going to have to, we're going to drag this one out a little bit, and I apologize in advance.
Yeah, that's fine. Can I have the mouse? Two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-two sufficient water, two seventy-five dash ten dash. Is there not ready? Okay. Two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-four soil erosion, two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-five traffic conditions, two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-six sewage disposal, two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-seven solid waste, two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-eight impact on aesthetics, open spaces, historic areas, wildlife habitat, and shoreline access, two seventy-five dash ten dash thirty-nine conformance with other regulations, two seventy-five dash ten dash forty financial and technical capacity, two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-one impact on water quality and shoreline, two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-two impact on groundwater quality or quantity, two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-three floodplain management, two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-four identification of freshwater wetlands, two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-five storm water management, two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-six recreation and open space areas, two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-seven phosphorus impacts on great ponds, and two seventy-five dash ten dash forty-eight spaghetti The standard is met because the applicant has provided adequate provisions to meet the standards.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six zero.
My apologies.
Was that all of them?
That's all of them.
That's it. We're there.
Great work. All right, so we have a draft?
I mentioned I talked with Tim about an hour ago. I was typing up findings of fact as I was talking with Tim, so obviously I can't multitask.
It's okay, because I can.
The planning board accept the information in the June twenty-four twenty twenty-four summer report, grant the requested waiver, and find the proposed amendment to major subdivision file K thirty thirty-nine for thirty apartments in three buildings and associated site improvements on properties located on School Street identified as tax maps K thirty lots thirty-nine and forty has satisfied the requirements of Article six of the subdivision ordinance and Article sixteen of the zoning ordinance, subject to the following condition. Standard conditions of approval number two, performance guarantee number three, AutoCAD submission number four, signed recorded plat number five, outside agency approvals number six, inspection fiasco, number seven, pre-construction meeting number eight, landscape and performance guarantee, and number nine, alteration of plans.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Six zero. Good luck. All right, so moving on to planning director's report.
I don't have much for tonight. We are still acquiring information for the campground discussion. We didn't add it tonight because we had three cases, and I, to be honest with you, thought it would take more than forty-five minutes to get through them. So we are still gathering all that information, both campground, one of our proposed campground owners reached out, as well as some of the people that spoke up during city council offered input, so I have requested from both of them to give us that input, which I said I would make available to you guys for our work session. So we are compiling ordinances, and we'll compile that information and have that ready for a a future meeting that we would have time to discuss. Other than that, pre-ops are still rolling in, projects are still rolling in. The the construction industry is still going strong, so I think we're in good good position still. As always, I'll take the opportunity to thank the staff that's present and behind the scenes. We're we're working everybody pretty hard, and everybody's doing a darn good job.
I hate to mention this, but mineral extraction?
Mineral extraction is on our list as it it's an important part of the the list, but our our list for Aaron is continuing to grow. We have started the comprehensive plan process, which I have hundred percent committed is the first priority. And then the moratorium is is a timed moratorium, so then that is second priority. And that means that the time is left, we're going to devote to mineral extraction. It's not going to die. I I promise that ordinance is still moving forward, not as quickly as I had once said and hoped, but we we have to do things in an order of priority, and that unfortunately has taken a step to the moratorium because that is a timed action.
Thank you. All set? All right, any other communications from the board? Yeah, go ahead.
I got a quick question. Do you know who's responsible for maintenance of the Midtown Mall parking lot, kind of decide where Aroma Joe's is? Used to be, I should say.
Where Aroma Joe's is, it's actually owned by the the property owner of the trust building. So they own a small portion of that corner. So right around the Aroma Joe's area is owned by the owner of the trust building. Other than that, it's municipal owned.
I just may mention it because I visited one of the businesses there on Monday afternoon, late Monday afternoon, and it really looks lousy, to be honest with you. There's garbage in the parking lot, and there were tags on the building. On both sides of the parking lot, the buildings were tagged with graffiti, and doesn't look like any of the trees or any of the, you know, brush was touched over on the Aroma Joe's corner of the parking lot. It really looks looks really like it's nobody's paying any attention to it. I was just curious whose responsibility it was to.
So I will have one of the court officers check into it to see if it's our property or or private property. We do have a property maintenance code that I I will add it to our list of of stuff to check out.
Like you need one more thing to do with. I just mentioned, because, you know, the Rhine Corp. is spending a lot of money right across the street, and I know it probably means a lot to them to have that other property cleaned up. It would help their project, too. It would help a lot.
I mean, there's lots of property owners in downtown in Sanford in general that take pride in their property, so it does it does hurt when one one potential bad apple isn't isn't following suit with their butters.
That's why I noticed it, because that was the one that stood out when I was when I was there.
I have, I know we have a bunch of items to go over, and like mineral extraction is one of them. I would at some point like to have a serious conversation on solar development. I don't feel like we have discussed it. I feel like we were pushed towards it, that, you know, with unwavering support, but there's a lot of details that were left out. You know, there's no tax revenue from the solar developments. They utilize a significant amount of land. You know, and so there's, I'd also like to revisit even the decision for the special overlay zone in a residential development neighborhood. I wasn't part of the board at the time, but I feel so strongly that a solar farm is inconsistent with residential development. We should not have approved that overlay zone. And I really feel like we should be discussing on where and when solar development is appropriate because it utilizes a lot of our land. And in a lot of, almost every case, it's taking raw land and stripping it to put solar farms in. And I just don't understand how that is green.
So that will come up as part of the comprehensive plan discussion and then rewrites. Is that something that you want to happen before then or during that timeframe?
If it is discussed about then, then yeah, but I do feel like we need to have a discussion at some point, because I don't feel like as a board, we've really had a comprehensive discussion on solar farms.
We did years ago. We didn't allow it in the R R zone.
And then we now do.
And then somebody wanted to put in the solar farm, which hasn't happened. So that was changed. I don't want to say that yet.
And so I just, I I feel like that is, as they crop up more and more, we may want to revisit.
I would, I would a hundred percent agree. I'll make a generic comment that CMP has rapidly slowed down the creation of solar farms. Most of the solar farms that we're seeing today are are three or four years old. They were part of the big study, and most of them are downsizing because of the study. So we're not going to see a lot of new solar projects, I feel, in the immediate future because right now CMP has basically shut down new solar projects. The only ones that are currently under construction are ones that kind of were through the process before. But I I definitely think it's worthy of a discussion. You're not the first person that's brought up concerns about solar farms. It's brought up in public. It's brought up in lots of different discussion formats, so I I definitely think it's worthy of discussion.
Second to that. All right. Anything else, Chase?
That's it.
Anything else in the rest of the board? All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, second.
No.
All in favor? Six. Thank you.